All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started now. Welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the city council charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are recorded for record retention and transcription. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. Agenda item number one is the roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and site visit. So Terry, if we could ask you to call the roll and if each commissioner would please state their name, what area they're from, and anything that they may need to disclose.
My name is Jared Burnt. I live up in the Highland area. I made a visit to agenda item number three, and I have nothing else to report.
My name's Jack Moore. I live in the Old Town area, and I did a site visit to agenda item number three. I have nothing else to report.
My name is Sarah O'Connor. I reside in the College neighborhood, and I have nothing else to report.
My name is Dorothy Ricks. I reside in the Alameda area. I made a site visit to agenda item three, and that's all I have to report.
I'm Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area, and I have nothing to report. Also need to mention, the agenda item number four, the preliminary plat for Western Skies, has been rescheduled, and so we will not be discussing that at this meeting. We'll now go on to agenda item number two, approval of minutes. Commissioners, I assume you've reviewed the minutes. Is there any discussion or a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Terry, would you call the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Agenda item number three, public hearing annexation. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by McCormick Ranch LLC, represented by RMES, to annex and zone 115.32 acres, more or less, of land located south of Neva Road and southwest of Gaithie Drive. The requested zoning is residential low density. The land is included in the area of city impact. So with that, we will open the public hearing, and we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commission members. My name's Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying at 600 East Oak in Pocatello. I'm representing McCormick Ranch on this requested annexation. So, most of you, well, there's a few of you that are familiar with this project, but basically McCormick Ranch purchased the Holy Spirit property that they used to own in conjunction with the Trail Creek property that was started for development a number of years ago. And if I can just kind of draw your attention to the, oops, to the map that we've got here. So, just in general, McCormick Ranch basically owns all of the, kind of the west bench of Pocatello from, that runs above Gaithie Road. So this is Trail Creek Road here, this is Gaithie Road here. And so all the land that's basically on that west bench that's yet to be developed is primarily owned by McCormick Ranch. There are a couple of owners, as you get further west, that is not included as part of their holdings, but in general, they own a fair or substantial amount of that property. So, this Trail Creek area is, is right here. We brought this, this proposal to the council a few, oh, last year, and I think most of you are familiar with that, and that was approved, and that's under construction right now. So one of the real nice things about the fact that now we have one kind of integrated ownership is that we have an ability to, to provide connectivity between these areas. And so, you know, it provides some interconnectivity, some traffic circulation, some safety for everyone in that area, not just, again, you know, even, even these old town neighborhoods will benefit from some of that circulation that's gonna be created through this overall development plan. So we're just kind of showing you a rough idea of how things could lay out there. We're working with some of the properties that we don't own. You can see those kind of in purple here to get that bisecting road through, and we have a couple of designs that will work, and I think we have some willing participants as far as those properties that we don't own to make that connection happen. So what we're talking about now, you can kind of see it's shaded in and highlighted in red. That's the property boundary that we're talking about. And it's about 115 acres of land. Really what, well, what's, what we're trying to do, again, is, is just provide a cohesive way to get this developed. And so, we're moving with our development plans to the, to the north so that we can make, make this connection into the road that the Catholic Church built here with their development. They had intended at one time to build a new facility there in this area, and that has since been, they're not, no longer interested in doing that. They've been upgrading their existing facilities that they have in town. So, right now, the need is to be able to start working to make these utility connections and kind of create circulation for the, for the road. So that's really the request for the annexation. So tonight, really what we're not discussing is all the development, any of that stuff. We really haven't planned that all out yet, but what we're, what we are discussing is whether it makes sense to develop this land in the county or the city. Because if you guys say no, and make a recommendation to the council that this is no and it's not approved, then that's, that's the tool that we take to the county to allow us to develop this property in the county. And I think it's not in anyone's interest to see this be developed as part of the county. So, again, the real critical part of this, this development, and what we're kind of a little unique from other applications that we've requested, is you can see this purple line here. And what that is, if I tip this down and we can, we can look in, move in close, you can see it's a very, very large natural feature drainage, a drainage way. The terrain in here is very steep. It doesn't, it's not exaggerated on this, on this particular map, but if you look at your contour maps in your package, you can see that, that this is a very difficult terrain. And it's, it's very unlikely that utilities are going to be able to extend across this, this draw, or roadways, or anything of that nature to service really just a very small area of development. There's, even this is not level. There's a small piece here, and not much here that can really even be developed. And so, it's never gonna be economical for the city to maintain those services over in that area, or for our developer to be able to, to, to develop that in a way that would be economical for, for anyone. And so what we're, what we're actually really requesting is that this piece and this piece not be annexed, that some reason will, will come through, and that really doesn't seem reasonable to have the city annex those. And then we will focus on this area, which is really where the intense development makes sense, and where we plan to really focus the, the primary part of our, of our efforts for development. And what probably would happen here is we put a few lots, a couple of lots at the end of Neva, and, and put a cul-de-sac, and then there'd be some county, a couple of county lots there, and probably nothing will ever happen with this piece. So that's, that's, that's really what makes sense. The city, you know, if we were to annex this into the city, and the city's gonna start providing like garbage services or something to that property, you know, it's, it's quite a trek out there to pick up garbage for a couple of houses, or, you know, and even providing water or sewer to those would just not be, not be feasible. It's also elevation that's higher than what the tank that was constructed in Trail Creek will service at this point. So, with that, we would just request that some logic would, would prevail, and we could not annex that, that portion. There's really not much of a standard in the, in the ordinance for annexations. It's basically, you know, you can annex if it's adjacent to the city, if it meets state code. Obviously, we're in conformance with all of that. We believe the comprehensive plan goals are met through this annexation. We're gonna provide, you know, a variety of housing types that will, will help with the city right now with some of our shortages of, of housing supply and stock. And so I think that's a pretty comprehensive overview of what we're proposing, and hopefully that's enough information that we can ask for your support for this, this annexation. I'll just answer questions if you have any, or if not, we'll hear from the residents.
So just the, like, the 10-second version? Just make sure we're on the same page. Annex everything the south of the purple line. North of the purple line, county?
Yep. That's what we would prefer. So, let's turn it the correct way. So, north is, so north of the purple line, we would prefer to leave in county. South of the purple line, we believe it makes sense for that to be, become part of the city of Pocatello.
Question is, so that, for this north little triangle that you are requesting stay in the county, is there access to that, that you, that you guys have outside of just what abutset that you own?
Yeah, just what abutset, just what abutset that we own. And honestly, you know, maybe in 50 years, when land is scarce, it might make sense to be able to get something in there to develop it, but it's gonna be a long time before something could be economically placed in there, if ever. It probably makes sense for that to be some type of open space lot of some sort.
Other questions for Mitch?
So, why does the proposal include these two sections that you?
Well, just the way the annexation process works, we were required to include the adjacent property to the city. We don't have separate parcels to distinguish those, and so that's why. It just, we, we had to lump the entire section that they owned into it to, to make it work. We tried to, we actually tried to split that part off, but there's a process that you guys are aware of, that you have to go through to do that, and so we just, we weren't able to make that happen.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mitch. All right, now if we could have Carl give us the staff report on it?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson. I'm with the City of Pocatello Planning Department for the record. As noted in the agenda and described by the applicant, you have before you for consideration an annexation request of 115.32 acres of land located south of Neva Road and west-southwest of Gaithie Drive. The request has been submitted by Brian Ball of McCormick Ranch LLC, and the engineer listed on the application is Rocky Mountain Engineering Survey. The request before you is in statutory compliance with Idaho State Code Section 50-2223.AI as a category A annexation, which allows annexation to take place wherein all private landowners have consented to annexation. The property is located within the area of city impact and lies contiguous to existing city limits at the northeasternmost property line. Based on analysis contained in the staff report, staff finds the proposal is compliant with all applicable municipal code sections. As described by the applicant and outlined on page two of the attached Public Works memorandum, the draw bisecting the property creates a natural barrier limiting the provisions of public facilities and services. Due to the limitations outlined, staff recommends that the northwesterly portion of the property, or of the proposed annexation, estimated to be 40 acres more or less, be exempted from the proposed annexation. The Public Works Department has reviewed the application and finds that there is sufficient capacity to provide utility services to the property south and east of the aforementioned draw, assuming all applicable standards are met. The Public Works Department has also recommended that water payment be provided per City of Pocatello Resolution 2006-02. As land is annexed, it shall be given a comprehensive plan and zoning district designation based on provisions of City Code Section 1701-130 in the plan, and, in the plan designation and zoning district conversion chart of this title, and the review criteria listed in subsection 1702-180E of this chapter. Per staff's analysis detailed in the staff report, a residential comprehensive plan designation is appropriate for the subject property and compatible with adjacent zoning district, zoning and land uses in the surrounding area, as well as the requested zoning of residential load density. All noticing requirements have been met for this application, and no written public comment has been received at this time. Staff has received one phone call from a nearby resident, who I believe received notice. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends the subject property be annexed into the corporate boundaries of the City of Pocatello with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Mary Elcliff, our Public Works Department is also here to answer any questions.
Good, thank you, Carl. Questions for Carl? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will now gather public testimony. For the public testimony, we would ask that you state your name and what area you're from, and try and keep your comments to three minutes, please. We will start with those who would be in favor of the application. If there are any that would like to speak and give public testimony in favor of the application, please come forward.
My name's Richard Bigelow. 4708 Revolution Road in Chevek, Idaho. But I own Lot 2 on Neva Road. Okay. I'm not opposed to this project. Matter of fact, I'm kind of in favor of it. City has to grow, and in order to do that, friends like Mitch here, he built this city. We need housing for Pocatello, of course, to grow as a city. My opinion is, if they're gonna hook up the city utilities, it definitely should be part of the city. It's not gonna be to anybody's advantage in this room to have these lots go into the county. Does that make kind of sense? I mean, if they're taking advantage of city utilities, it should be a part of the city of Pocatello. And that's my testimony, and I'll close with that.
Excellent, thank you very much.
As long as my lot stays in the county.
Fair enough. We don't need to sign. Any others that would like to speak in favor? Any that would like to speak that are neutral to the application? Very good. Any that are opposed that would like to speak?
My name is Ann McCarty, and I am Lot 5 on Neva Road, which is the county. I guess I'm, I'm not really for or against anything at this point in time. My biggest concerns are, if it's gonna be annexed into the city, where's the water supply? How many wells will be drilled? Will they be drilled on the property over the ravine that may impact my well? Because I'm the last house there in that water flow. So that, I, I know we didn't talk about water wells or anything like that, so that's kind of my concern, is how it will impact the Neva Road people, the water frontage. I'm also in question of, are we gonna make an access road down Neva Road? I mean, they've talked about the gully being left into the county, but are we gonna cut a road so that's an access? I mean, I've lived happily there since 1969 with not a lot of impact with cars and stuff, so that would be one of my concerns, is will they bring a road for access, or where will the access roads be for all those homes? I mean, if you're up on the top here, I'm, I'm not sure if the guys are gonna, you know, cut that road and stuff. So, I believe in housing, of course I do. I guess I have a lot of concerns on how it will impact us on Neva Road.
Yep, thank you. Are there any others that would like to give testimony?
I'm Jerry Bigelow, and I live on Satterfield, but we own the lot up there on Neva. And we bought that because we wanted to be out in the country. I wanted the view, I wanted the wildlife. I mean, we take our grandchildren up there for Easter egg hunt, and six deer, we're just right there, and I don't want to lose that. That's why we bought that. And again, I, I'm with her about the condition of the wells and traffic going up and down that road, and I don't want the taxes for the city of Pocatello. That's why we're going up, we went up there. It's not that I don't oppose it, because we've been here for quite a while, but everything's just going up in the city, and I, the traffic, I just, I wanted the peace and quiet and enjoy the beauty of, that's already there, and I don't want that taken away. So, that's my.
Great, thank you.
My name is Joanne Anderson, and I live further on up the hill to the west. And I guess one of my concerns is with this subdivision. I worked for the county for 30 years in the assessor's office. And one of our big concerns is with fire, and one way in and one way out. It looks like we've got another subdivision here that's one way in and one way out. So if you've got a, and I've been involved with fires up on that mountain, I've been involved with fires up Mink Creek, the last one we have, had up there, Johnny Creek. My parents had a home up Johnny Creek, and it was hard to get in or get out with, with fire equipment and emergency equipment. At this point, I'm not necessarily for or against this, I want to wait and see where this is gonna go. Again, I'm concerned as well with the wells. We're, you know, are you gonna drill wells? Are you gonna tap into the city of the well that's over? I think they've got further over towards Trail Creek, there's a, a tank. Is it gonna, is it gonna hook up to that? And the other, one of the other things is on your subdivision, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but are these gonna be just single homes, or are they gonna be rentals? Are they gonna be duplexes? What kind of a subdivision are we gonna have up there? And that concerns us. Because that'll, that'll determine, you know, we've got 30 lots, but you've got a rental, and you've got six cars in, instead of maybe two in a house, or maybe three in a boat. So, just something to think about.
All right, thank you. Any others that would like to speak?
I live at the top also, Steve Beck. The road, wasn't this actually annexed into the city once, the Catholic Church's property? Was it ever annexed, or what was the deal with it?
The property below, I believe, is, yes, the Catholic Church property already is part of the city.
Well, they have a road off of Gaithie Road, it's a stub road there, and it was supposedly to tie into Craft Road, because where that road comes into the highway, that's, that's a disaster, and that should be addressed. Other than that?
Steve Beck. Was it Beck or Peck?
Beck, B-C-K.
Any others that would like to speak?
My name's Ryan Houghton. I actually live in the Jolene Loop. Right now, I own land up just north of, not northern, right there, right, right there. So I'm in favor of this, I have no problem with it. However, I think what Steve had mentioned, I'm just a little concerned about that intersection from Gaithie to Craft and bringing more traffic in there, and if there's any plan to make that work better, so. Other than that, I, I'm in favor of it, so, that's all.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mitch, would you like to take some time for rebuttal?
You bet. Mitchell Greer, Rocky Mountain Engineering Survey. This is one of the unique times where I think everybody that's opposed is kind of on our same wavelength with this project, so it's kind of a unique situation to be in. We really don't want to impact what's going on on Neva Road, that's why we're requesting that we not annex, you know, north of that purple line that we're discussing. And we think it makes sense for this area to stay in the county, just based on its proximity from the utilities, the terrain, all that stuff. Would Neva Road get extended? I think at some point, our plan would be to develop a couple of county lots in this area, so it'd be a, you know.
Five acre?
Yeah, like five acre density lots, that's what would be required, something like that. Maybe, maybe five acre density, but maybe some of that open space would tie into it or something. But anyway, that would be, that would be a plan for that area. I think that's a plan that makes sense, it fits with what they have, and that's kind of what we'd like to see happen there. As far as, I didn't talk a lot about the water supply and the wells, but going back to the early 2000s, an extensive water system was developed by the previous owners of Trail Creek. A booster station, a very large booster station, large and expensive, I will say, was constructed here. It transmits, emits water up to a tank that is located on the eastern or western side of the Trail Creek property, and that feeds all of this area, and is intended to really feed most of this development. So that supply comes from the City of Pocatello's water supply, and that supply comes from numerous wells within the valley of the city. So as far as the overall impact of water and stuff in this area, you're not gonna see that regional or that direct impact from that, from this project as a result of that. Now again, these lots would likely have, you know, some single-family wells or something there to support what we did there, but that's only gonna be a small number of residences, as we discussed. The access is, has always been a concern, and I think if you remember, so, one of the real benefits of this, and as Ms. Anderson stated, one way in, one way out. So, that's kind of been the, the theme on the west bench, it's been the theme in a lot of developments, as she alluded to, but in this case, the beauty of what we're proposing is we're gonna create a nice interconnected transportation network up there. And there's a, you know, there's a nice road that's going to come across, it'll interconnect, we'll have connection from Trail Creek, so things that happen there can come out on Trail Creek, we'll have connection off of Gaithie. It will be a much, much, much safer and better situation than what we presently have for that area. Now, as far as Gaithie Road is concerned, again, going back for a number of years, and that was even back to when Hoku was gonna locate out there, I think everyone has recognized that this, you know, this, this little connection right here is a little hokey, probably never should have been allowed when it did go in, but it's been there forever, and so that's just what's there. So we, if you, if you notice, one of the things that we did when we worked on this Holy Spirit project was we brought Gaithie Road into an intersection, we created kind of a, a place where that essentially slows down the traffic in some respects, it kind of creates a little bit better traffic flow. And why did we bring an intersection at that point? Because long-term, the plan was to extend Gaithie on, over here, and, and create a situation where that would better this intersection, so if the road can come through here. Now, because of Hoku and things that have happened, and, you know, the development that happened in that area, it's kind of stalled. That, that plan never happened. That, I think, long-term, this road is going to continue at least to our northern boundary at some point. We, we intend to develop this area at some point as well, and that would, that road would extend and, and get to this point. Now again, we'd have to work with the owners of these properties, the city has some property in that area that would help facilitate that, but again, there's, there's gonna be some... in that area that would help facilitate that. But again, there's, there's going to be some things that need to happen to, to get that all the way through. But long term, that's kind of the overall transportation plan for that area. Short term, it's going to be improved immensely. Long term, it's going to be improved even a little bit better. So, I think we've kind of addressed all of that stuff. The utilities, the infrastructure, all that stuff has been developed and in place for a lot of growth on that, on that bench. And, and with the city, you know, again, we've kind of partnered on a lot of the planning that's happened up there. And really, this area is, is poised for growth. It should be annexed into the city. We, we believe this is a, you know, kind of a unique area in our city that, you know, people are going to find very desirable. And, and we just ask that you approve the annexation, and we can move forward and start kind of developing some of this area and making it a nice addition to the city.
Thank you, Mitch. Commissioners, the items before you, is there discussion, thoughts on the application?
Seems to be well thought, thought out, and does seem to meet most of the residents of Neva Road's concerns.
I would agree that those two triangles, north of the purple line, don't make much sense to bring into the city. It would be extremely difficult for the city to, to service those areas. I think it would be considered a mistake going into the future if those were brought into the city. At this point, perhaps in the future at some point, that whole area could eventually end up in the city as, as further development occurs. I don't know that this is the time for that to happen, just because I don't know that it would, would help anyone, neither the applicant nor the city.
I agree, buddy.
I would certainly entertain a motion or any further discussion.
I would make a motion to, to recommend approval of the application with the, with the 248, or, or two triangles not being annexed. So a slight... Yeah, to annex the property in question and exempting the, the land located at the northwesterly quarter of the land to be annexed, estimated 40 acres or less to be zoned, residential low density, and a comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential as requested. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.110 of Pocatello Municipal Code with that 40 acres being exempted from annexation.
Do you want to include the staff?
With staff conditions as well in that?
Oh, yes, of course, with the staff conditions.
I'll second that.
Very good. So we've got a motion by Moore, a second by O'Connor. Terry, would you call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming.